Okay, if you would all please stand and say the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. I am Nina Rosamondo, president of the League of Women Voters of South County. On behalf of the League, I would like to welcome you to the second of the League of Women Voters South Counties' Meet the Candidates Nights for 2018. Tonight, we have the Town of South Kingston. First, the school committee, followed by the forum for the town council. The views expressed tonight are those of the candidates, not of the League of Women Voters, and the sponsorship of the debate is not an endorsement by the League of any candidate. All candidates qualifying for placement on the ballot have been invited. So now, I'd like to thank, first of all, you, the members of the audience here at Narragansett Town Hall, the South Kingston Candidates for School Committee, and thanks to our viewers on Cox Channel 17 and Verizon Channel 28. One of the most important duties we have as citizens is to learn about issues and candidates so we can make informed choices when we vote. If you find a forum like this is an essential part of your election decisions, please consider joining the League and help provide your community with nonpartisan voter education and advocacy for open and accountable government. The League is open to both men and women. There are membership materials back there on the table by the door, along with other voter information. Democracy works only when citizens participate in the process. Forums like this could easily be a lost resource to South Kingston if citizens are only spectators in the process. In fact, the reality is, unless more residents from South Kingston join our League, we will not be able to put on these forums in 2020. So, talk with a League member tonight. There are a lot of us here. Consider attending a monthly meeting. We meet in Westerly the second Wednesday of the month. Details back there. Learn more. So, we're here tonight to ask questions of the candidates and to listen respectfully to each of them as they discuss issues important to the future of South Kingston and Rhode Island. We appreciate your voter interest and enthusiasm, but please, hold your applause and refrain from reacting to the candidates' answers. This is a nonpartisan forum. I'd like to help many people for helping with this forum. First, the League of Women Voters Rhode Island Education Fund for providing funding. The Town of Narragansett for the use of the town hall and council chambers. And the staff at the Narragansett Town Hall for their help and cooperation. Many thanks also to my fellow members of the League of Women Voters South County who have worked many hours on planning this event, and to the citizens of South County who submitted a record number of questions to us this year. Thanks to the Westerly Public Access Television Studio, PEGRI-TV, for handling the live broadcast tonight and frequent rebroadcasts of this program. And thanks to the local media covering this forum. The League website will have links to the forum videos as well as the broadcast schedule. Last, but by no means least, I would particularly like to welcome our moderator tonight, Holly Courage. Ms. Courage is past president of the State League of Rhode Island and past president of the Providence League. She is currently treasurer of the League of Women Voters Rhode Island Education Fund and chair of the League of Women Voters U.S. Clearinghouse Committee, a group that maintains a website of studies done by the League on various issues around the country. So now, to our distinguished moderator, Holly Courage. Okay. This is a very busy evening, so we'll get started right away. The first question, due to interest, high interest in the town, will be addressed to all candidates, starting with Sarah Markey. Okay, you have to leave the question. Oh, "In March, the South Kingston School Committee voted 3 to 2 to close the Wakefield Elementary School and the Curtis Middle School. The school committee is already working on the closing and repurposing of these schools. Please explain in detail your position on this decision and if you are an incumbent and how and why you voted as you did."
Thank you. That's a great question to start with. The closing of Wakefield Elementary School, the decision by the school committee to close the elementary school in Wakefield, is essentially the reason why I decided to run initially. It's an amazing school that is the heart of the community and is a thriving school that there really is no reason to close. While we face long-term declining enrollment, like much of New England, I think there are much more thorough, responsive ways to address that rather than closing Wakefield. So I would overturn, I would vote to overturn the closing of Wakefield and keep it open because it's really important. And frankly, it's a point of a lot of conflict within our community that's just unnecessary.
Okay. Thank you. Next, Jacey Northrup.
I would also vote to overturn the decision to close Wakefield Elementary School. I don't believe that we stand in enough of an enrollment crisis to warrant the closure of the school. I think if we want 21st century learning space, then we need to provide wider, open classrooms and not cram them with more kids, which I feel is what would happen if we lost an entire building. So I feel very strongly as well that that little school should stay open.
Okay. Stephanie Cantor.
So, it was definitely a very, very thorough consulting process to go through this legacy plan. My goal is just to ensure that we're very transparent, data-driven, and evidence-based in the way that we execute on it and make sure that we're not doing anything reckless. The reality is that the new enrollment numbers this year support keeping Wakefield open. Specifically, the legacy plan predicted 1,003 total K-4 students in 2018-19, and the actual numbers show 1,029. We had 26 more K-4 students than projected and 13 more just in kindergarten. I want to be clear that I'm not opposed to building closure when the data is irrefutable, but if we keep Wakefield open, we take those savings, we apply it to further upgrades at the high school, and we save money on those three additions that we can't predict the cost of. So, I also want to end on a high note that there are several districts in Rhode Island that have seen growing enrollment, some of them up to 12% since '98, so it can be done.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Carol Vedder.
So, it breaks my heart to think about closing Wakefield School. My kids went to Wakefield. I love that learning community. However, we are in, you really can't dispute that we're in a phase of declining enrollment in South Kingston, and it is predicted to last, you know, until after 2025. Given that declining enrollment, in order to get the most reimbursement rate from the state to upgrade our facilities, which we desperately need, especially at our high school, in order to get that higher reimbursement rate, the state is mandating that we consolidate schools. And it's a huge difference. If we, under the old rules, we've got 35% reimbursement for school improvement. Under the new rules, if we follow what the state has outlined, we get 55%. So, it's not fair to the taxpayer to ask them to pay 20% more, and we desperately need these school improvements. Thanks.
Thank you. Emily Kaminski.
Hi. So I am an incumbent. I was appointed last year, and I stepped up because I could see at that time that the possible closure of Wakefield was a possibility. That was one of the main reasons that I stepped up. I have looked at the numbers over and over again, both the numbers that it would cost our district to close the school, because at this time, you cannot close Wakefield School and absorb the students into the other three schools without building. So I've looked at those numbers, and I've also looked at the enrollment numbers. And at this time, as others have said, I do not believe that we are in an enrollment crisis that will necessitate the closure of Wakefield School. I've talked to RIDE several, several times over the last year, and I have been assured that we, as South Kingston taxpayers, will be able to see the five point, the five percentage points for consolidating schools simply by closing Curtis Corner.
Thank you. Hi. Thank you. The next candidate, Raisa Mosher.
Hi. Yes, I'm also an incumbent, and I did vote with the school committee, 4 to 3, to close Wakefield School. I'm sorry, it was 5 to 2 vote, yeah. And the biggest thing for me is that I've watched over the course of my eight years on the school committee, us have dwindling resources and spreading those resources very thin across buildings. We have had an enrollment decline of almost 40% over the past 15 to 20 years. We're slated to continue to decline, and the thing that we have in place is a contingency committee that if, for some reason, the enrollment does not continue to trend the way that it's predicted, that we can then decide to continue to use Wakefield as a school building. But what this does is allow us a runway in order to prepare for what that building can be, because it's not slated to close for four years. So instead of, you know, putting the closure off now, it allows us that runway to plan for what the building can be.
Thank you. Next candidate, Catherine Massenanti.
Nailed it. Thank you. Hi, I am an incumbent who voted, I was one of the five who did vote, on the plan that would result in a closure of Wakefield Elementary School and also Curtis Corner Middle School. We are, as the previous speakers have said, we are in a trend. We're trending downwards. The state is trending downwards. 1998, there were 12,000 live births. 2014, we were down to 10,000, and the trend is to continue in that direction. South Kingston is no different from the state and national trend. There was a lot of thoughtful dialogue that went into the conversations throughout the community and in the general population. It was, it came out that the general consensus through those conversations was supporting the B plan, which resulted in a closure of Curtis Corner and Wakefield. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland Benjamin.
So I'm also an incumbent, and I voted for this plan that is broader than just a school closure plan, as the question kind of indicated. It was a full look at our K-12 facilities. It looked at all the demographics across the school district. The trends are clearly evident. 10 years ago, we looked at one projection that suggested we would have 1,350 students in our elementary levels for the next 10 to 15 years, and we're already hundreds below that. We're expected to go down even more. So what we did was we looked at a plan that allowed us to balance the needs of the taxpayer while overhauling the full facility roster that we have, but also doing it in a way that allows us to be able to react to different things that may change. So it really was a comprehensive plan that is needed to be done. Rather than chasing a problem, we're able to do this proactively.
Okay. Thank you. Our last candidate, Scott Miller.
You got it right. So, I'm an incumbent. I voted in favor of the comprehensive facilities plan, one feature of which is to close Wakefield. And really, the rationale of the five of the seven people on the school committee who voted in favor of that has already been identified. We went out and looked in much greater detail at demographics. The trend line is very clear, and we are ahead of the trend line identified back in 2010. Frankly, the, I don't disagree that we're not in a crisis now. I think that the planning of the school committee shouldn't wait for a crisis. We can see what the data says. We can see what direction we're going. This is the right action.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. For the next round, since there is an odd number of candidates, the one-minute questions will be, each one-minute question will be directed to only two candidates. And one, and then the, for the final question, there will be one question addressed to three candidates. The order in which candidates will be asked a question is random. Let's see. All candidates will be asked one question before any candidate is asked a second question, and so on through each round. Okay. All candidates will be asked the same number of questions. Okay. Oh, "In addition, each candidate has been given two colored index cards, which are wild cards. A candidate may use a wild card to respond to any question which has not been directed to him or her. More than one candidate may use a wild card on any question. However, once a candidate has used all their cards, he or she may only respond to questions directed to him or her." Okay. "In the candidate's closing statement, issues or questions not answered during the forum may be addressed then." Okay. So, to begin round one.
And this is to Roland Benjamin.
Okay. Okay. Then, okay. Question, this question, question two goes to Roland Benjamin. "It has been estimated, and..."
Emily Kaminski.
Oh, and Emily Kaminski. Okay. Two. "It has been estimated that closing the Wakefield School will result in an operational savings of approximately $1 million and maintenance savings of approximately $5 million. If you are elected and there is a new vote resulting in keeping the Wakefield School open, how will you propose to deal with the budget issue? Mr. Benjamin."
Well, if, if I am elected, I would continue in the same direction that I've already voted. The operational savings that are there are part, in part necessary to fund some of the renovations that we're also talking about, things like the high school and expanding the room sizes of all the classrooms. Kind of a critical element of the whole building plan is to look at school construction from the 20th century, which uses classroom sizes in the 600 and 700 square foot area. Broad Rock being the last building under that architecture to really focus on that. About 95% of our classrooms across the district are at that 600 and 700 square foot size. Modern teaching methods need a larger footprint, so the operational savings that would come from that closure are part of the full package that allows us to expand a majority of our rooms to approach this new standard of about 1,000 square feet.
Thank you.
So I absolutely support making the upgrades to all of the buildings that remain, especially the safety upgrades to the buildings. What I do think is extremely essential for everyone to understand is that we would be bonding to build additions onto the three elementary schools that remain, and that's going to be a huge financial debt to our district. I think that if we leave Wakefield School open, that we will be actually saving money in the end. I do think that the money that we borrow from the state, or that we receive from the state, or that we borrow in bonding, should be majorly going to the high school, where all students will benefit.
Thank you. The next question will go to Ms. Cantor and Ms. Massenanti. Okay. Third question. "Two committees have been recently formed to oversee planned construction work at the town schools. The school building committee has members appointed by both the town council and the school committee and will oversee the plan for the work on the school buildings. They will specifically focus on the restoration of South Kingston High School and on any construction that will be needed at Broad Rock Middle School and at any of the elementary schools. The second committee, the contingency committee, will focus on the conditions such as demographics, housing, and revenue thresholds, the price of steel, and other factors that could affect the plan. Please explain your ideas for the work to be proposed." Okay. Cantor.
Hi. So first of all, I've heard nothing but really excellent things about the collaboration that exists already between the school committee and the town council. I think we, as voters, need to remember, you know, when you're looking at town council, you're looking for fiscal responsibility, people that you want to trust with your tax dollars to get the best return on investment for us. And the collaboration with the school committee, whose main goal should be to optimize the learning outcomes for all the students in the district and prepare them for college and career, it's important to note that. So I've heard great things about the collaboration, and I think it's excellent that both of those committees are represented with both of those mindsets. As Emily said, you know, I think that it's not so cut and dry as to where the savings and the expenditures would come from. I do think we have creative ways to actually share resources within the different schools, and I think that the contingency committee would be an excellent source for that. And I think that that will help to kind of ease the pain of potentially hanging on to some of those buildings.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. The next, Ms. Massenanti.
So one of the great things that's coming out of the building committee right now is the collaboration. But just recently, the, there were members of the building committee that had not seen the state of our current schools. And so, we, there was an arrangement to bring the town council members and some of the other individuals who are part of the committee to tour through, and they started at the high school, so that they could actually see the state of our classrooms, the size of our classrooms, how the science labs are separated outside from the actual science lecture rooms. So the building committee is doing a really thorough job evaluating the size and function of our classrooms and the state of our buildings. For the contingency committee, I think they're doing a wonderful job. They're, they're looking at a lot of different things. They're looking at the enrollment. They're keeping things in check to make sure we are planning towards the proper state of affairs, basically, for our district.
Okay. Raisa Mosher.
So I just wanted to speak to this because I am the chair of the building committee, and so we do meet every other week, and we have a timeline that we're working on. It is a big group from the town and from the schools, and we are working closely together in order to make sure that everything is done in a transparent manner when we put these plans forth with the town council and with the schools. So the first thing was, as Kate said, to really do a thorough walkthrough of the high school, because some people were not understanding what really 21st century learning looked like. So as we continue to follow through on that timeline, we need to keep our architects and our consultants in check in terms of the money that's going to be spent. That's, that's some of the work that is happening with the building committee.
Okay. Mr. Benjamin.
So I'm also involved on one of those committees. I'm involved on the contingency committee, and the critical function of that committee was to look at the district and make sure that we weren't deviating from what we were being told as one of our major inputs to the facility plan, and that was something like predominantly what our enrollment is, but also what are some of the leading indicators to that enrollment that might suggest five years ahead of time that there might be a shift. A significant number that is an indicator for us is our birth rate in town, and we have, just this past year, we had about 157 children born in 2017 in South Kingston. They become our kindergarten class in five years. Compare that to where we were probably about 15 years ago, and we had an eighth grade and a seventh grade class numbering close to 390, at 386. So we have, those are the types of numbers that we are looking at on contingency, really just to make sure that we're not making a mistake.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Emily Kaminski.
So I also sit on the contingency committee, and a couple of things that I would like to bring forth is that South Kingston is not typically a town where people are starting out, where young couples are starting out. It's a town where we have a large population of in-migration. So looking just at birth rates in South Kingston or birth rates in Rhode Island of South Kingston residents, I don't feel is completely comprehensive way to look at it. Also, over the last 15 years, we had, we had over, our schools were overfilled. We had huge numbers of enrollment. I'm a South Kingston graduate, and I went to school in South Kingston my entire life in graduating classes. We're not too far off from where they are right now. So what we're looking at, as we look at an enrollment decline, again, is not a crisis. We're maybe coming back down off of a plateau where, a plateau where we were over the last few years. So I think it's really important to keep that in mind.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now, now we can move on to the next question, which will go to Ms. Markey and Ms. Northrup. Okay. Question four. "At the end of August, Education Commissioner Wagner signed an administrative directive to all Rhode Island schools, which stated, quote, 'All firearms, including concealed carry firearms, are hereby banned from all public school buildings and grounds by anyone other than visibly identified active law enforcement officers,' unquote. Please explain your views on this policy." Ms. Markey.
We should absolutely not have concealed carry firearms in our schools, not for teachers, not for visitors, not for parents. It's not appropriate in an education setting. And honestly, it's really hard for me to understand how anyone could support that, given that I have two kids, a 13-year-old, a five-year-old. I certainly don't want anyone entering their school with a concealed carry weapon. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Northrup.
And I agree wholeheartedly. I also agree that I do not want my children going to school where anyone can walk in with a concealed weapon. If there's an incident, an issue, and police are called, they're in the uniform, they're carrying guns, it's expected. In a scary situation, I think they would be welcome, but on an everyday stroll-in, pick-your-kid-up with a weapon, or, I shudder at the thought of a day when our elementary schools actually have to have armed guards. So no, I agree with what, what the commissioner did with his order.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. For the next question, we'll go to three candidates. Ms. Mosher, Mr. Miller, and Ms. Vedder. Question five. "There has been a lot of talk about preventing school gun violence. What policies do you specifically propose to increase school safety in South Kingston?" Ms. Mosher.
So I did vote on the policy against concealed carry weapons in our schools. I am in full agreement that, I don't believe that guns belong in our schools outside of law enforcement officers, but we also have an opportunity with the facilities upgrade. Each of our buildings will be getting security, safety and security upgrades that I think are long overdue. It's extremely important in these times to protect all of our children, and so those types of decisions going forward and being on the building committee, I will make sure that those are top priority in where we spend our money.
Okay. Mr. Miller.
As an incumbent, I also voted for the South Kingston School Committee policy banning weapons from the school, with the exception of policing armed and uniformed personnel. So I support Commissioner Wagner's position. This has been before the General Assembly now for a number of years, and has been blocked, so I appreciate his initiative there. I really think that the work that we're doing in the South Kingston schools to provide better supports for students with regard to health and mental health, the wellness initiatives, the work being done by the Wellness Committee with regard to anxiety, those kinds of things, if we can provide the supports to our students, we ensure that our students are going to end up experiencing safety in the schools.
Thank you. Okay. That's the end. Oh, we have a quick, we have a wild card. Oh, we have a quick, we have a wild card. Oh, you're right. Carol Vedder, sorry. Too many, too many people. Carol.
Okay, thank you. So I think unfortunately, gun violence, events that have recent, happened recently, like the Parkland shooting last February, have brought the importance of school security to a forefront. The state of Rhode Island has secured a $10 million grant for things like digital doorlocks, cameras, alarms, to keep our buildings safer. These are immediate things that we can do to make our buildings safe, and I think we should pursue them. We owe it to our teachers and our students to give them a safe place. Also, safety is two-pronged. It's also about mental health and well-being. We need to continue with our curriculum on anti-bullying and social emotional awareness to make sure that our kids are emotionally safe as well. Thanks.
Okay. Now the wild card. Sarah.
Hi. I also support the safety and security upgrades, and I think there are some common sense things that can be done right now and that the district is planning to do, like adding the vestibules at the entrances where, for the schools that don't have them. I'm glad that folks have mentioned mental health, because data shows that more and more kids these days are entering school with trauma in their home life, right? So we have to really think about the physical upgrades, which is really important, but also the whole child. So providing those mental health supports. I think the Wellness Committee has done an amazing job addressing anxiety issues and end some of the mental health issues that, that kids may be coming to school with. But I do think we have to keep an eye on also prioritizing social workers and those, those, those extra resources outside of instruction that students might need.
Okay. Catherine Massenanti.
Hi. We, we actually have started the process already to tap into the $10 million bond that the governor has, has allotted. We, as the chairperson of the Wellness Committee currently, we work very hard to make sure that we are putting in the proper mental health supports. And we partner very closely with Karen Murphy, who is our most recently appointed social emotional learning coach throughout the district. We have the Choose Love program that we've implemented K through 12. And in one of my last discussions with her, we discussed how we want to bring that Choose Love concept out to not just the students and the teachers, but to the parents, and then take it a step further and bring it out to the community and become a Choose Love town.
Thank you. Okay, Stephanie Carter. Kanter.
So I'm going to piggyback on what Kate said and draw attention to the really excellent things that South Kingstown is doing, because to focus, to make investments in social emotional learning is not necessarily something that every district is doing. And our school committee is going wholeheartedly towards it, towards full-time resources that the district is using. We have excellent organizations like South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention that are housed like within the schools, and coming up with age-appropriate mindfulness methods for all of the students, but also reaching out to the parents, because the violence is obviously really heartbreaking, and it's hard to understand. And I think that we're doing an excellent job, and we need to keep doing it and double down on that, on ways to prevent it, to raise healthy children that can cope, that can cope with like an ever-changing world that honestly, we can't even imagine at this point. So I think we're doing a great job of it so far, and I want to see that continue.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. No more wild cards. Okay. On to round two. Next question will go to Ms. Kanter and Ms. Vedder. Question six. What do you think needs to change for town council members so that the South Kingstown Comprehensive Plan is followed when? That's a, that's town council question? Hold on, let me just check and see if this is, if questions, yeah? Okay, it says it's in the school committee. Okay, Comprehensive Plan is followed when zoning and other ordinances are considered. Ms. Kanter.
What was the, can you repeat the?
Sorry.
Let's just go to question seven.
We'll, we'll go to question seven. And we'll do, we'll do, I'll tell you what, we'll do three, 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 and three. Okay.
Yeah, we'll just skip ahead. We'll just do one question.
Okay, we'll go to, the, the school committee voted not to expand the dual-language program in the South Kingstown schools at this time. What is your position on expansion of dual-language classrooms? Ms. Kanter.
Yes. So I'm happy that this question came up, because when my family moved back to South Kingstown, one of the things that we were really excited about was that we were zoned for Peace Dale, and so our kids might have this opportunity for DLI. And what we ultimately decided was it wasn't a good fit for our older son, not to say that it won't be for our second. I think as a community, we should expect an equitable implementation of all of our programs. DLI is a good example of that. Program-wise, it's in its infancy, but honestly, timeline-wise, we should be farther along. And it, the confidence is deteriorating at this point, and the effectiveness of it. I think current DLI families have been placed in an unfair position, almost as like scapegoats for facility utilization problems, which is unfair. It has incredible value, but we are responsible to taxpayers to show that it fits our mission. I want to see a strategic plan and a balanced scorecard for how we are meeting these goals and our plans to correct any missteps. I want to plan the expansion of DLI to Wakefield and Mattoonik.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Vedder.
So I'm a big proponent of the DLI program. I wish it was there when my kids were in school. They didn't start learning a language till they got to the high school, where it's much harder for a child to learn at that age. Kids in kindergarten, they just learn a language so much easier at that age. I do wish that we had implemented the DLI program at all four schools instead of just two. I do think it takes enrollment away from Wakefield and Mattoonik and displaces the students. There is an enormous amount of resources out there for the DLI program that would have supported it being at all four schools. I went to graduate school at, in Davis, California. They have an immersion program there that was started in 1982, so they've been doing this for 30 years. It's a great program, but I do think that it really does belong in all four schools.
Okay. Thank you. Now, Sarah. Okay. Sarah, Mark. Thank you. Ms. Markie.
Hi. So just to be honest, I think most of us know that the DLI program, when it was rolled out, was rolled out somewhat disastrously, right? It was inequitable, it was at a couple of schools. And in fact, if you didn't have transportation, then you were just cut out. You had to go to your homeschool, you had no choice. And I think in the future, when we have initiatives, we have to have a really thorough lens on how we make sure they're the most equitable, so every student has a chance to, to, to take advantage of them. So I think, though, that DLI is an important program. We should protect that program. Frankly, we've made a promise to those students and to those families. And dual-language, all data shows, is a good thing to learn. I just think we need to look at maybe tweaking with the program, because we're asking parents to make a really important decision before their kid even walks in the school door. So maybe it's looking at, do we start DLI in second grade? Do we start, do we make sure that parents get used to, that students actually get used to the school, and then parents can make a decision that they really shouldn't have to make before their child even starts kindergarten? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Ben. Mr. Benjamin.
So this has been a touchy point for part of the entire two years that I've been serving. And it has, it has come with issues, there's no doubt. Some of it stems from the simple thing that when it was implemented, back to this idea that we would have a stable enrollment in our elementary grade, and, and then proceeded to lose a couple hundred kids in those, those areas. That created displacement of teachers beyond just what was normal. We would expect from attrition to be able to hire the new teachers that we would need to support the program, but instead, we now had, instead of one or two displacements in a year, we've had three or four or five. This creates a challenge operationally, it's, and it's, again, part of the decision-making process that, that was unreliable to begin with, which was the projections, and that flavors all of our decisions, so.
Thank you.
Did anybody else want it?
Oh. Mr. Miller.
So I just want to amplify a little bit Roland's comments. I've supported DLI since its inception. I voted against expanding it in this year. We've identified both an assumption about enrollment that turned out not to be accurate. In addition to that, the original plan was to accommodate staffing changes through retirements. That assumption was no longer accurate. And finally, what we identified was that we were ending up with a tracking system in choices between DLI and non-DLI. I'm, I'm prepared to come back and vote to support DLI, but I think that we need to resolve those issues so that when we roll it out, and it works for the entire community.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Mosher.
So I just wanted to speak to the initial rollout. Some of the concerns that have come about in terms of DLI have been teacher displacement and a very valid concern about losing our senior teachers or more senior teachers to DLI teachers. So it was a very thoughtful pilot of the program in terms of being sure that we put it in the two schools that were our Title I schools, so the children who may have less access to providing their own transportation would be able to access the program, but also not to roll it out at once to all four schools, because that would have immediately displaced a tremendous amount of teachers. And I also voted not to expand it, because the original thought of, of teachers retiring did not, did not come to fruition. So I, I put a halt on it, not because it was a disastrous rollout, but because we're being thoughtful about it.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Oh, okay, wait a minute.
Oh, we've got another. Carol Vedder.
So teacher displacement is very important, and it's a very important part of the discussion of DLI. However, you could have rolled it out at all four schools with one section at all four schools instead of two sections at two schools. It would have been, instead of one teacher in two classrooms, one teacher teaching in Spanish and English, but it would have been the same four classrooms. So it wouldn't have displaced any more teachers to do it at four schools than, than they did it at two. It would just have been a different model of teaching. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Now are we, can we move on? Okay, now we can move on. Question eight. We'll go to Mr. Benjamin and Ms. Mosher. What ideas do you have regarding the curriculum for high school students to better prepare them for employment directly after high school graduation? Mr. Benjamin.
Just last night, at our committee meeting, we had an overview of our CTE and our pathways program at the high school. And the nice thing that, that I've been able to see over being involved in the, in the district for 10 years in different capacities, both as a school committee member and just as a community member, was to watch a strategic plan development at a retreat that we were invited to as candidates back in 2010, create this line of college and career readiness that then becomes, eight years later, here we are, looking at our first wave of students coming through a CTE pathway for things like biomedical that are CNA certifications or carpentry and, and safety certifications in, in, in different fields. It's not a pure vocational path, but it's a way that you can be ready for college and, at the same time, have an employable skill that you, you can get a job immediately out of high school. So that was a 10-year process that's been kind of rewarding to be part of.
Thank you. Ms. Minsky.
No, no, Mosher.
Oh, Ms. Mosher, sorry. I slipped the line.
That's okay. So I am also very excited about our, our career pathways at the high school. That came about through a couple of things. We restructured the high school administration about three years ago, where we added a prince, a vice principal who was in charge of STEAM and a vice principal in charge of humanities. And together with teacher leaders, they worked very, very hard to start talking about pathways. It was a deregulation at the state level, which allowed us to pursue these, these career-ready opportunities for all students, students who may be headed to college but who, who also may not. So we have a finance academy, a biomedical, we have a CNA, we have carpentry pathway, we have a studio art pathway. So all these things are very exciting opportunities for all of our kids. We're also looking at middle school students being able to, through their ILP, identify things that they might be interested in in the future at the high school.
Thank you. Okay. No wild cards. Okay. The next question goes to Ms. Kaminski and Mr. Miller. Nine. There has been a call to support our democracy with better educated voters. The Rhode Island Department of Education already mandates civics through, throughout K through 12 with guidelines, but no specific courses for each grade. At what level and in what manner would you favor implementing civic education in South Kingstown? Mr. Kaminski, Ms. Kaminski.
I think that we should start teaching our, our learners about the importance of being educated and making decisions as early as possible, starting in perhaps preschool, kindergarten. If we make sure that our youngest learners are aware about, have, have self-awareness and are aware of their ability to make choices depending on what they have researched, whether it be at a playground or in play as youngsters, and as they get older, learning about government and even older, learning about how to vote and taking part in school civics opportunities like student council and so forth, which we do offer as early as middle school. I think that will be doing a great service, but I do think it is extremely important to start that process of self-awareness young.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Miller.
I would agree with, with Emily's response. I think that the Department of Education's position on civics education is correct. I think it's important, but without curricula, without expectations in terms of student performance, it's a statement of philosophy rather than of education. It's my hope that the Department of Education will provide some leadership in conjunction with the State Association of Superintendents and Principals and our professional educators to begin to put teeth to the education process. I agree that it, it needs to start, and we see painfully the absence of civics education. So it needs to start as soon as we have contact with students and needs to continue throughout.
Okay. Thank you. Now, no more questions. We are now going, next question goes to Ms. Massenanti, Ms. Markie, and Ms. Northrup. Question 10. What are the school committee's top three strengths and what needs improvement? Ms. Massenanti.
So our top three strengths, I believe our current board right now is probably the most amicable board I have witnessed. I've been sitting in the audience, watching our school committees for close to 14 years now, and there's often either silence, there's sometimes, over the years, there's been intimidation, there's been all these different factors. And what I think is really interesting about our current board is while there's differences of opinion, there is definitely respect shown, especially at the microphone and in public meetings. Another strength that, actually, I'm going to skip over to weaknesses at the moment, because I'm running out of time. One of the weaknesses, I, I believe, as a, as a body, is if we make a misstep, in the past short period of time that I've sat here, people aren't apt to say, "I made a mistake," and I would like to kind of rectify that. And so I think taking the opportunity to say, "You made a mistake," isn't a bad thing.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Markie.
So I, I think the number one weakness of the school committee is that right now, we're allowing operational allowing operational decisions to happen that have enormous negative impact on students, things like eliminating a high school library position, moving a life skills program that's so important to special education students from URI to the hazard school. We're allowing these operational decisions to happen behind closed doors, without community input, and without really any leadership from the school committee on these issues that'll have enormous negative impact on our students. And so, I think, you know, we need more leadership, and we need more collaboration between all the different stakeholder groups where we're really listening to and drawing from the best ideas of our community, because we have a really thriving, smart community. And I think one of the strengths are there's a lot of experience on the school committee right now, and that is an important thing.
Okay, thank you. So, now we are. Ms. Northrup.
I actually, I agree with Kate, and I agree with Sarah. I've been to some school committee meetings, and I feel that they do get along quite well, and that makes a meeting easy to watch. I also believe that there are decisions being made that should have more impact, more, say, from the stakeholders than they do. I agree also with the, sometimes it's okay to say we messed that up. It's a very difficult seat. Anytime you sit and you work for the people, like the school committee members do, you put yourself out there, and no one's perfect. And if I'm lucky enough to find myself at this seat, I hope I can say, "Oops," every now and then, because I'm sure it's not easy.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Ms. Cantor.
Yes. So, some things that I think South Kingstown does really well is I think we have progressive initiatives that other districts in Rhode Island are not necessarily doing, or even beyond Rhode Island. So, I love some of those progressive initiatives, STEAM, DLI being a few of them. Some of them might be a hit, and some of them might not. And then, you know, you figure out where the misses were, and you move on. We have a lot of enthusiasm and pride in the community here. I've lived in other places as a parent and before being a parent, and I will say it's very unique. This is a very unique committee or community. People have a really special level of passion about what goes on in their community, and that is evident on the school committee itself. And I also can see that there's a lot of collaboration within the committee, which is great. However, an amicable committee is not enough. There's a need to lead, there's a need for transparency, and respectful responsiveness to the constituents that want to see things on the agenda that pertain to them and their families.
Thank you. Okay. So, we're just going to do the five lightning round and then go to the closing statements. Okay. Okay, we are now going to move on to the lightning round questions, which require only yes or no, a yes or no answer, no answer from each candidate. Each candidate will also be given 10 seconds to elaborate beyond the simple yes and no. We're going to be going.
Just in the order.
We will be going in the order which everyone is seated right now. So, the first question, we will begin with Ms. Markey. If elected, would you push for a new vote of the school committee on school closures?
Yes, absolutely.
Ms.
Yes, I would.
Yes.
Not unless there was a change of leadership at the State House, or the question one bond didn't pass that would allow for the improvement of the schools.
Thank you. Ms. Minsky.
Yes, I would.
No, I would not.
No, I would not.
Mr. Benjamin.
No, I would not. No, unless there was a change in the structure of the state funding or a change in terms of the membership of the school committee.
Okay, thank you. Next. Yes. The next question will start with Ms. Northrup. Are you concerned that closing Wakefield Elementary School will adversely affect Main Street businesses?
Yes, I am.
Yes, I am.
I'm concerned, however, it would depend on what the town council decides to do with that property.
Yes, I absolutely am.
I think we have an opportunity for the town to thoughtfully plan for what happens with the Wakefield School building in order to not affect businesses on Main Street.
Thank you.
After witnessing what has happened with the, on Main Street over the summer and during the period of time where school is not in session, I am not concerned.
Mr. Benjamin.
I am obviously concerned about the impact on the economic sector of our city, but what Raisa and Kate had both just mentioned, I'm not.
Ms. Northrup.
I'm concerned until we have a plan that will respond to the potential downside.
Ms. Markey.
Yes, I'm absolutely concerned about what would happen to our Main Street businesses if Wakefield Elementary were to close.
Okay, thank you. Next question will start with Ms. Cantor. Do you support the $250 million state bond issue for school construction, which will be on the November ballot?
Yes, as long as we are opting for one of the other four options that town council committed to supporting, which does not include closing Wakefield.
Yes, I absolutely support question one.
Yes, I support question one.
I support question one, and I think because it's a statewide bond, we're going to be paying the money anyway. I'd like to see it coming back to South Kingstown.
I'll reiterate what Raisa is saying. I absolutely support it, and I just hope that we get our application in and move forward so that we can actually see money from it.
I'm inclined to support it, but I question the timing of it during a governor's election year. I would agree with Kate and Raisa, and I support it, and I think that we need to make sure that the application materials go in so that some of that money returns to our community to support public education.
Thank you. Ms. Markey.
Yes, I support it.
And I also support it.
Okay. Next question will begin with Ms. Vetter. Do you support maintaining the current number of monolingual classes in each South Kingstown school, even if enrollment is less than contract limit of 10 in some classes?
Could you repeat that, please?
Okay. Do you support maintaining the current number of monolingual classes in each South Kingstown school, even if enrollment is less than contract limit of 10 in some classes?
That's a hard question to answer because class size varies at the high school versus elementary schools. I think our school district does a really great job of managing class size, though.
Okay. Ms. Minsky.
We were just presented with, I know this is yes or no, but we were just presented with class sizes less than, we don't have class sizes less than 10. No, I would not support having class sizes less than 10.
I would support maintaining a monolingual classroom in every elementary school, and I think that there are ways that we could creatively address the number of students, including perhaps we would end up having to cap the DLI at a different number in order to do so.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Massenanti.
I would support, I would support that, yes.
Mr. Benjamin.
There needs to be a critical mass of monolingual sections. I would support that.
So, we have, we need to have some monolingual classrooms at every school. DLI is not for everyone, but also I think that most parents, teachers, taxpayers would say that 10 or less is too little of a class size.
Yes, I would support that. I'm kind of like Kate. That was an odd question, and we need monolingual classrooms, and 10 is, less than 10 is too small of a number, but I do agree that our district does a great job with class size.
Yes, I would support maintaining a monolingual classroom in every single school, because, again, DLI is not the best option for every student, and enrollment fluctuates a little bit. So, might have less than 10 one year, it's not necessarily going to be permanent.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think we should just go on to closing statements. Okay, because we're at, we're almost at second.
Okay. Okay, well, it appears that we need to move on even now, so that we will start the closing statements with.
With Sarah.
Okay, we're going to begin the closing state, one-minute closing statements, beginning with Sarah Markey.
Okay. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. I'm so grateful to be here tonight, and thank you to everyone that came. I'm excited about the opportunity to serve on the school committee, primarily because I've spent my entire career as an education advocate, from community organizing to labor organizing. I've partnered with various stakeholder groups around important issues that we face in education. My strengths are my deep understanding of education policy, budgets, and the ways in which we can and must engage stakeholders authentically in our school districts. I'm collaborative and transparent, something that I think is really important to have on the school committee. I started my professional life as a community organizer, working with immigrant families to navigate the public school system. So, the values that drove me in that work are the same values that lead me to run for school committees today. Those values are fairness, equity, respect, and justice, and I think we need and deserve a school committee that centers students and preserves and improves all of our thriving schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Northrup.
I would like to begin by saying thank you also for the opportunity. This is my first run for any kind of political office, and this is all very new to me. I've lived in South Kingstown for 14 years, and I have two kids in the district. To say the least, I am vested. I volunteered for many organizations before, or worry with what those are, but I have a tendency of throwing myself in and giving 110%, and I can't even imagine that the South Kingstown School Committee would be any different. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I know everything there is to know about the school committee. Again, it's very new to me, but I'm not afraid to admit that I don't know, and I'm not afraid to ask questions. I'm in favor of all of the district-wide upgrades to our facilities, ensuring safe and inspiring learning environments for all of our students. I respect taxpayers and believe the budget and decision-making process should be transparent. I am excited about the non-traditional and vocational pathways being offered at the high school, and in a nutshell, I'm honest and fair, and will be honored to serve the community in this way.
Thank you. Ms. Cantor.
Hi. So, again, like I said, thank you all so much for being here and for putting this event on. I want you all to know that at the root of my candidacy is just a huge gratitude for South Kingstown and a desire to serve. My personal experience gives me a unique lens to view our schools through. My career is in school technology. I work solely with K-12 schools on how to responsibly implement innovation and technology that best supports a variety of missions and enhances their learning. So, I have experience managing people, collaborating with various senior leadership teams. I'm a current commission member of South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention, and I've jumped in on the wellness committee as well. But truthfully, at the foundation of it all, I'm a passionate parent, I'm a good listener, and I work hard. Last year, I stood in front of town council to be considered as an appointed school committee member due to a vacancy, and I stated that no matter their vote, they would still see me this year as a candidate, and here I am. I am here for the long-term vision and success of this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vetter.
Yes, I also want to thank you for hosting this forum. I love this district, and I love this community. I have three sons who attended our district schools, and they received an excellent education, and I want to make sure that all students have these same opportunities. Good governance doesn't happen by accident. It happens when discerning people come together and commit to addressing every issue with an open mind, by asking thoughtful questions and committing to do what is right for the student. I have volunteered in the district for over 16 years, serving as PTO chair or treasurer at many of our schools. I have served on school improvement teams, PBIS teams, special education committees, and many, many others. It is my years of experience with the district, as well as my passion for education, that will make me a strong leader on the school committee. I am Carol Vetter, and I ask for your vote on November 6th.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Minsky.
Thank you so much to everybody who has put this together, and also to all the community members who have, want their support to the school committee. I am running to keep my seat on the school committee because I think that I have been a valuable and a positive voice of reason since being unanimously appointed by the town council last November. As a lifelong resident of South Kingstown and a graduate from South Kingstown High School, I have a vested interest in ensuring that our schools are the best that they can be and that we move forward with a facility upgrade plan. While I also think that we need to simultaneously make sure that we meet the challenging financial constraints that have been imposed largely by decreased state and federal funding. My background includes holding a master's degree in nursing education, being a board member of several local charities and, including the Welcome House of South County. I've been on the PTO for the last nine years, and I've been a CARES classroom volunteer for nine years. I am dedicated to this town. I have insight as to what is and isn't working from the vantage point of a current school committee member, a mother of four children currently attending SK schools, as a taxpayer and as a volunteer.
Thank you. Ms. Mosher.
Yes, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, but also to all of the candidates here who have stepped up to run for this very important role. It has been extremely fulfilling to have served on the school committee for the past eight years. These have been amazingly productive years where we have passed policies such as our transgender equity and, most recently, the first-ever immigration policy in the state, as well as embarked on initiatives that will meet the needs of all of our students, including our very exciting pathways and career and tech programs at the high school. I am confident that the diverse opinions on the school committee have ensured that all voices are heard, though I am also aware that in some decisions we make, there are some who will not agree. That is why every vote I have taken has been carefully thought through and based on years of data and experience. There are many challenges facing the district over the next several years that will require the steady hand of an experienced school committee. I am grateful to have served with a group of members who have shown the ability to work together to solve big problems. There is still much to be done. I would be honored to have your vote on November 6th.
Ms. Massenanti.
Hi. Thank you for everyone who put this on, for everyone who's here up at the table, and everyone who's here in person and behind the camera. I'm basically running for progress. I believe that we're at a tipping point in our community, in our nation, in our world, but specifically in our education, where we need to find balance, and that balance is being driven by a decrease in students and a decrease in funding, but at the same time, we have increase in need and we have increase in learning spaces. And we need to figure out how to balance all of these sides of things while continuing to be creative and innovative and progressing in South Kingstown. I'm running for our schools, I'm running for our kids, I'm running for our district and our teachers. My number one concern is the overall wellness of our school community, and that's inclusive of parents, teachers, administrators, parents, et cetera, our town. I think we're all one big cohesive unit, and I think we just all need to work together to progress our community and our town and our schools.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Benjamin.
So, balance is crucial, and staff, students, and taxpayers comprise our major stakeholders in our district. When we balance their needs, our district functions highly, and this is why I got involved. I own a business with 60 employees. I've coached hundreds of South County kids over the years. I've managed business relationships with Fortune 500 customers, won the Best Places to Work Award, and kept kids smiling through the toughest parts of a season. My experience is a lifelong practice in balancing diverse needs of all stakeholders. We know when we're out of balance in the district. Students are shuffled to save jobs, staff takes haircuts to save buildings, our taxpayers push hard in a budget cycle. Eventually, each group pays a price. We have some big things happening, and we cannot afford to get these wrong with narrow views. The town council jumped away from typical partisan politics to appoint me in 2017, and I thanked them. The school committee did the same thing when appointing me chair, and I thanked them. They recognize the needs of our community. These decisions are too big for narrow interests, and I'm humbled to be a part of this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
I want to thank the League for this conversation. I've been impressed by the people who have stepped up to run for the school committee. This has been a good conversation. I'm finishing 26 years of service on the South Kingstown School Committee. In all honesty, I have loved every moment of it. I have twice served as the president of the State Association, served for eight years on the board of the National Association of School Boards in Washington. I know school committees, and I know their work well. The town of South Kingstown, the children and their families have been well-served by the members of this committee and by our superintendent. We broadly represent the differences in our community. We have dealt with thorny issues, we have We have dealt with thorny issues, we have worked productively together. My name is Scott Miller. Please vote to return the incumbents to the committee on November 6th. Experience matters.
Thank you all. So first, I'd like to thank the candidates. I hope you all have learned something from what they have to say. I'd also like to thank those here at Narragansett Town Hall and our viewers on public access television. If you'd like to applaud or boo or whatever. Just a few more comments. Please attend the next Meet the Candidates Night, which is October 24th for the state senators, districts 35 and 36, and representatives from districts 33, 34 and 35 for Narragansett and South Kingstown. All forums will be here at the Narragansett Town Hall starting at 6:30 PM. This forum will be rebroadcast, rebroadcast on Cox Channel 17 and Verizon Channel 28 frequently between now and Election Day. The rebroadcast schedule is on the League of Women Voters website at www.lwvri.org. If you have a audience survey, we would greatly appreciate your completing it and handing it to one of the League members. There's a basket at the door. Thank you all for coming.